Welcome, we're going to open this meeting of the Mason County Commission for June 8th. We are going to begin with our pledge allegiance. Commissioner Trask, would you do us the honor of leading us to the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Out of curiosity, what was that? I was thinking it looked like a pink loofah.
That's funny, I thought, well, is anyone hearing me?
No, it's all good. All right, again, welcome everybody, roll call please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
Good morning, I'm here.
Excellent, we have a corn roll present, we'll move on to item number four, which is correspondence and organizational business. Do we have any correspondence to come before us this week?
We do. Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following. A liquor license for the Eldon Store and a liquor license for Smoking Mo's LLC. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission sent in a letter regarding the spillway embankment seepage geophysical investigation report, Krishman Project. Mason County Public Utility District Number One and Mason County Public Utility District Three sent in an annexation election petition for Alderbrook Golf and Country Club. Mason County Republican Central Committee sent in a resolution regarding constituents' rights regarding medical procedures and vaccinations. Becky and Cass Sells, Rob Granland, Mark and Jane Fisher, and Mike Speech Resort sent in letters of support for Hood Canal Communications Partnership with Public Utility District Number One regarding the American Rescue Plan Funding Request.
Excellent, is there any other correspondence or organizational business to come before us?
Not that I can see.
Thank you, then we're going to go ahead and move on to item number five.
Which is our open forum for citizens' input. This is your opportunity as a citizen to talk to the commission regarding any issue that is not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, we ask that you wait. You'll be given an opportunity to speak or testify on that issue at that time. With that being said, if it is not on the agenda, please, I'll allow you here to, let me see if I can go to the thing. If you, to put your hand up first, if you put your hand up, we will call on you and allow you to speak to the commission on an item not on the agenda with a three-minute time limit, remembering that sometimes there can be a lot and there's a 15-minute total time limit for everybody. So please be brief. With that being said, is there anybody who would like to speak to the commission on an item not on the agenda? For those of you that do not know how to raise hand, if there's somebody now that would like to speak to the commission that is not on the agenda, I ask that you please unmute yourself and say your name and give me the opportunity to call on you. Is there anybody hearing none, then we are going to move forward to item number six, which is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt today's agenda as written.
Second.
It has been moved in second for the adoption of today's agenda as written. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, approval of the minutes, and I have none. So unless somebody has anything they want to add, I'm going to move on. Here are no objection, we'll move on to item number eight, which is our approval of our action agenda. All items on the action agenda will be written to the, will be read to the community and will be voted on with one vote. Unless, of course, somebody would like something taken off for a separate vote. The commission will be given an opportunity, so will the public. At that point, you also will have an opportunity to ask a question that would help you to decide whether to take it off for a separate vote. If you want to testify, please take it off, we'll give you the opportunity to testify at that point. I will read item number 8.1 through 8.5. 8.6 through 8.10, Commissioner Schutte please, and Commissioner Trask, please read the remainder. Item number 8.1, approval warrants and treasures, electronic remittance, claims clearing fund warrants number 8080191 through 8080839. The amount, $2,289,863.17. Direct deposit fund warrants number 77767 through 78164. The amount, $755,045.93. Salary clearing fund warrants number 7005941 through 7005965. The amount, $563,343.74. Treasures, electronic remittance, $255,761.42. Item number 8.2, approval of the 2021 oath of credit card inventory. Item number 8.3, approval to appoint Micah Sanders to fill currently vacant term in the Mason County Historical Preservation Commission, which expires November 30th, 2022. Item number 8.4, approval to establish a special revenue fund for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. Item number 8.5, approval of the agreement and to pay for the use of the No Before software with the understanding that Washington State Risk Pool will reimburse Mason County for its portion of the No Before software in the amount of $17,449.83 for a three-year period.
Item 8.6, approval to amend the contract with Kiotti Communities to extend the end date through September 30th, 2021. Item 8.7, approval to add one full-time employee to the planning department as a planner or senior planner. Item 8.8, approval for the sheriff's office to purchase enough in-car and body cameras for each commissioned and partially commissioned deputy and all sheriff's office vehicles. Requisition to systems for public safety to install cameras and vehicles and to create a new FTE and hire for an evidence technician position. Item 8.9, approval to execute the interlocal agreement between Mason and Kitsap Counties to provide residential household hazardous waste collection and disposal opportunities. Contract number KC34621. Item 8.10, approval to authorize the chair to execute the County Road Administration Board Rural Arterial Program, Perspectus Amendment Number One. Increasing rural arterial trust account funding to $1,188,000 for County Road Project Number 2020. Old Belfair Highway resurfacing, restoration, and rehabilitation project.
Item 8.11, approval of the private line occupancy permit granting permission to run utility lines under and across northeast northeast North Shore Road for address 16891 parcel number 3220-50-03022. Item 8.12, approval of the private line occupancy permit granting permission for the existing water line running under and across northeast North Shore Road for address 16161 parcel number 32224-50-01007. Item 8.13, approval of the private line occupancy permit granting permission to run a new water line under and across northeast North Shore Road for address 5530 parcel number 22210-12-00080 on Landon Road. Item 8.14, approval to amend the current contract with Pacific Security for Mason County weapons screening and campus security to add two additional guards. Item 8.15, approval to set a public hearing on Tuesday, July 6th, 2021 at 9:15 a.m. to consider an annexation election petition received from residents in the Alderbrook Golf and Yacht Club to annex that area into Mason County Public Utility District One.
Thank you, commissioners. Now that all the items have been read into the record, this will be your opportunity to ask questions regarding items that are on the agenda to help you decide whether or not to have something taken off for a separate vote. If you would like to testify or have it taken off for a separate vote, please just say that and we'll give you that opportunity. So with that being said, first things first, if you can raise your hand and you'd like to ask a question regarding any of the items that was just read to you, please raise your hand on Zoom and I will call on you. If you can, please raise your hand on Zoom and I will call on you. I see none, so now, if you do not know how to raise your hand on Zoom, I'll ask you to unmute yourself and say your name, please, and then I will call on you at that time, and you will be given an opportunity to ask a question. If you'd like to unmute, unmute now, say your name and I will call on you. Hearing none, we are going to move forward to, commissioners first, are, is there any items you'd like to have pulled off for a separate vote?
Nope.
Not for me.
In the public, are there any items that you would like pulled off for a separate vote? If so, I would ask that you go ahead and unmute yourself and say your name and I'll call on you. Any items you'd like taken off for a separate vote, please unmute yourself, say your name and I'll call on you. I hear none, hearing none and seeing none, commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of today's action agenda items 8.1 through 8.15 as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved in second for the approval of today's action agenda items, items number 8.1 through 8.15 as presented. Any comments, commissioners?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, item number nine, department heads and elected officials. Are there any department heads and elected officials who would like to speak at this time? Travis, I see that you have shown your picture, would you like to speak?
I would.
Then I'll call on you first, please, Under Sheriff Adams.
Yes, so, three quick things I'd like to bring up, and I would have liked to have spoke at the last meeting, however, I was gone to a conference, so I apologize about that. The first thing that I wanted to do is I wanted to thank the commission for the proclamations that you brought forth at the meeting two meetings ago. You brought forth one proclamation supporting local law enforcement, not only sheriff's office, but our tribal partners as well as the city. And given the political environment and the sometimes lack of support that we have seen in other jurisdictions from the political establishment, I just wanted to say on behalf of local law enforcement, thank you very much for doing that. In the same vein, you put forth a proclamation supporting our corrections folks, and I wanted to thank you for that as well. I think that the corrections folks are deeply unappreciated in the community. They don't understand how much work those folks do and how critical their job is and their central role in the criminal justice community. So the fact that you recognize them and brought that forth, again, I wanted to say thank you for that. In the same vein, I wanted to address the commission and just publicly come out and thank Kelly Frazier and his group for all the work that they do here. I can tell you that we have a lot of moving parts here at the sheriff's office, and as you know, we were working on our gym project here recently and with the motor pool and all the stuff that they're doing for us, that would be plenty. However, we've been, we've been asking them to do even extra stuff over here. They just finished a project for us where they tore down a couple walls, built another wall, put a door where one wasn't before, and they have just bent over backwards to help our office out and create a better workspace for some of our folks here. And so I wanted you to know the good work that they're doing and how much they bend over backwards to help our office out. And so that's greatly appreciated, and I just wanted to bring that out to the commission. And finally, I wanted to, this one is a little more timely than the other ones. I wanted to thank you for having the foresight to move forward with the body cam and video cam, or car cam project for the sheriff's office. We very much welcome having that new asset here in the department, and our folks do a great job day in and day out. And we think that capturing that on video and having that for evidences of the good work that they do and as well as evidence for the cases, I think it's going to be very beneficial for Mason County, and I appreciate you having the foresight to take the action on that that you did.
Thank you, Under Sheriff. You know, normally we just would end there and move forward, but because of the, some of the things in the community that I think we need to be addressed, I know this commission feels very strong about the support for the wonderful people we have, and I'd like to give the opportunity to Commissioner Schutte and Commissioner Trask to say something about that if they would choose at this time. No?
Commissioner Trask?
Go for it, Ken.
Okay, well, I just, you know, I appreciate the time, Under Sheriff, to join us at the meeting today. I know having the privilege of serving on the MaceCom 911 Board as well, I get a different perspective on the amount of work that your deputies are doing day in and day out and all of the ancillary effects of that. So call volumes are through the roof, you know, probably going to be, you know, setting another record this year. And so we know that every day, all day, they're running, you know, nonstop. And so each call represents different challenges and different opportunities in the community. And as you mentioned, it's oftentimes been, in recent months especially, you know, difficult, you know, in terms of feeling the support. But I believe that this community is very much in support of our law enforcement agencies. You know, and I'm happy to be counted among those and appreciate really two things. One, I think, you know, our sheriff's office is really proactive when it comes to being held accountable in the community. They don't shy away from those difficult conversations, and I think they also want to do it with transparency. And I think the body cam conversation speaks to that, and, you know, Under Sheriff said we had the foresight, but honestly, we wouldn't be able to do that if it wasn't for an overwhelming willingness from the sheriff's office to bring that forward, that we would be having that conversation. And so it's nice to see that accountability starts first and foremost within the ranks of the Mason County Sheriff's Office, and we're always happy to participate in supporting that. And so just, I know we're coming into the summer months and the pressures are going to be there, but give them all a big debt of gratitude from us and, you know, look forward to everybody going home safe at the end of their shifts.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trask?
I have a, I think everyone knows I have a big space in my heart for law enforcement. Had a great time as a Phoenix police officer and I worked in the prosecutor's office. And so I know the hard work that you guys do and the countless hours that you're away from your families. So an extra appreciation to the families of our law enforcement officers, there takes a, takes a special person to do what you guys do. And so by providing the body cams and the car cams, I think that that's an extra, extra support for our officers and also for our community. I don't think that we have any issues, and I don't think that, you know, we have any down the road, but this is just protection for everyone, knowing that we're open, we're very transparent. And I appreciate that about all of you. But thank you guys for everything that you do, please extend a, give your guys a hug for me.
Yes, that's me, the hugger in the office.
Yeah, can I come over and watch?
Yeah.
No, thank you guys for everything that you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. First, I want to give some props to Commissioner Schutte. I want you to know that Commissioner Schutte is the one that brought this to our attention. Although we supported it wholeheartedly, it was brought forward to us by Commissioner Schutte. They won't pick that out. You know, in these times, we see so many things on the news, it's always amazing to me, some of the comments that I hear from different individuals. And I'm surprised because I can't understand how they cannot separate the difference between a law enforcement officer out there doing their duty in a way that is so professional, and I watch it over and over again in Mason County with somebody in Minneapolis. Our folks are not the ones that you saw on the video in Minneapolis. As a matter of fact, as we're bringing forward this video, body cams, I want the public to understand, we're not doing it because we think anything is being done incorrectly by our officers, it's quite the opposite. We want you to see that they do things professionally. As a person that is surprised when I'm standing there watching how they deal with large groups that have even gotten unruly, I have great pride in their professionalism. And the reason why we're getting these cameras is in the hopes that when somebody makes accusations, that instead we can turn on the video and show the public and let the public catch these officers in the act of excellence, because that's what you're going to find. There's no confusion with that here, and I wanted to say it was a timely resolution to bring forward a thank you to all of them because one thing I want to make clear, even though we can battle politically and have different issues, I can't come to work if you and your folks don't do what you do. I'd have to be home protecting my wife, my kids, and everything I own. The same goes for all of us. If you don't have somebody else that's doing the protection on the street, you're not going to leave your home. That's the part in history we kind of tend to forget. So, Under Sheriff Adams, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart, and for your family for having to put up with the stuff they have to, and for every officer in your department, God bless each and every one of them. Just know that we are very thankful and know that you do more than just show up to work, so.
Thank you, commissioners, I appreciate all the kind words, I will pass those on, and thank you for your job.
Have a great day, be safe.
Yep.
All right, are there any other elected department heads who would like to speak at this point? If so, please unmute yourself, say your name so I can call on you. Are there any other electeds or department heads who would like to speak? Hearing none, we are going to move forward and go from item nine to item 10, which is a public hearing. We're going to open this public hearing to consider a petition for annexation for additional property into Mason County Fire Protection District Number 16. Staff Diane Zorn.
Good morning, commissioners. So as stated, we received the petition to annex a couple parcels into Fire District 16. It's the same process that we did earlier this year, but the election failed, so they're petitioning for it again. And I believe Chief Wielander is on here.
Yeah, yeah, commissioners, if you don't mind, instead of waiting for testimony, I would like to open it up as part of the presentation from Chief Wielander. Is there any objection?
No.
Hearing no objection, chief, would you mind addressing the community? You're muted, sir. There you go.
You know, it's been a year, you'd think I'd have it down by now. So the original, the original election failed because of the way, I hesitate to say because of the way the ballot was written. Because it wasn't necessarily that as much as it really pointed out a problem with the civics education of a lot of Mason County residents in general and that junior taxing districts are their own governance and they have their own sets of resolutions and like that. The ballot read that it was to approve Resolution 21-004, which for us was a correct resolution number. For the county, that number actually corresponded with something with, to do with Habitat for Humanity. And the way the voter read it, he was very unclear as to where the money would actually go. Long story short, I was able to explain it to him the day after the election. He signed the petition again, asked that the ballot be written a little bit differently, and he's totally for the whole thing. And we have no opposition to the annexation on a whole, but we did have to run it again, and it will be in November on the general election.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you first, do you have any questions for staff or the chief in regards to the presentation they just gave?
Not for me.
I will ask in the public, if you have any questions in regards to staff or the presentation, now would be the time to raise your hand, remembering that this is just a question, the presentation they gave. If you'd like to testify, give public testimony, you will be given an opportunity later. But at this moment, it's just to question the presentation. I see no hands up. If there's anybody in the audience that don't know how to use the Zoom and you would like to unmute yourself now, let your name be known so I can call on you, please. Hearing none, I'm going to close that and move into public testimony. Is there anybody in the public who would like to testify at this time? I ask that you please put your hand up on the Zoom participations list. Anybody who'd like to testify? Hearing none on that, I'll ask if you don't know how to use the Zoom list, please unmute yourself now, say your name so I can call on you. If you'd like to testify, unmute, say your name, and give me the opportunity to call on you. Hearing none, I will close public testimony and I will move to commissioner deliberations. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Trask.
Oh, go for it.
I was just going to say, definitely supportive of this, you know, there was a technical correction that needed to be made and definitely confident that those issues will get resolved and have no issue at all by putting this, about putting this back forward for District 16 to get it on the ballot in November.
Pretty much took the words right out of my mouth, but yeah, I support this and look forward to it being on the ballot.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the resolution finding that the lands describing the petition we benefited and approves the annexation request into Mason County Fire District Number 16.
I'll second.
It has been moved in second for the approval of the resolution finding that the lands described in the petition would be benefited and approves the annexation request into Mason County Fire Protection District Number 16. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and this hearing is closed.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, chief. Next, we will open public hearing to consider the rezone of 10.75 acre parcel. Parcel number 32030-14-90030, from neighborhood residential NR to mixed use within the Shelton urban growth area. Staff Marissa Watson.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So before we start here, I'm going to share my screen just so everybody, the public can see where that parcel is located real quick. All right. Um, so we did, the community development department did receive a request for a rezon for the particular parcel that you just mentioned. Site owner is Renee Salazar. We received a complete application on March 9th from him and his representatives. The request is to rezon from neighborhood residential to mixed use. And you can see on the screen the location of this particular parcel. The department made a stupid determination on March 18th, and it was a DNS. We got comments from the Squawston Island Tribe, which were attached to that public hearing packet. We did respond to those, those comments. The public was also notified, all property owners within 300 feet of the property lines were noticed of this, of the pack hearing. And it was also published in the Mason Shelton Journal in April as well as in May for this public hearing. And site was also posted on March 18th. The Planning Advisory Commission held a public hearing on the proposal, and they voted to recommend that the rezon go to you guys, the Board of Commissioners, for approval. I also followed up with the City of Shelton at our last briefing. There was questions about what the comments were from the City of Shelton and WashDOT because of the access from the highway there that would be utilized by the project, a potential project if the rezon got approved. Comments, I got responses from both the city and WashDOT. WashDOT basically said they were fine with the proposal, they didn't, they didn't have any additional comments. And then the City of Shelton, their main concerns were if access was going to be used from the East Delante Road. That's narrow and serves the residential area up in the northwest corner. But that is not where the county is proposing access, they're proposing access from the state highway there. Other issues, the only other thing that the city commented on was that the, this particular parcel in the northwest corner is still neighborhood residential, but they were mostly concerned with commercial trucks coming through that area. Again, I don't see that being utilized for this project. Again, access is supposed to come off the state highway over here. And then the other issue was that the city's mixed use zoning doesn't allow for light industrial use, which is the doesn't allow for light industrial use, which is the proposed project. If the rezon gets approved, is it a greens processing plant? But it is, it is, the county zoning does allow light industrial as long as it's a, an accessory use. So, but tho- those were all the comments. Those comments are, were attached with the packet for the public and the commissioners to see. The staff and the PAC are recommending that the Mason County Board of Commissioners approve this rezon request. And then I will open it up to any questions. Oh, I also want to state that staff did, staff does believe that the eight rezon criteria were met with this proposal.
Commissioners, I'll start with you first. Do you have questions regarding the presentation?
I do not.
I do not either.
I do. So on the mixed use is hard for me to tell with that map. Is, is there any other mixed use around it or touch from that property? You're muted.
Sorry. There is not any mixed use around there, but there is commercial, general commercial there to the east. And then you do have resident, residential, of course, on the other, to the west and south of it. Go ahead.
I know I brought this up during our briefing. Did we ever check with legal to make sure that this will not be considered a spot zone?
We don't believe it's spot zoning.
I, I, I don't believe, did you ask the legal?
I, I did not ask legal. I talked with, I talked with my boss, Kell Rowan, on this too. I don't know if she's on.
I am.
Hi, Kell.
We talked a lot about, yeah, there is a difference between spot zoning that's legal or illegal. And because this is a, an applicant requested rezon, we're not doing any special favors. It's not, it's not the county going after a particular piece of property and rezoning it for our own purposes. We've had several rezones similar to this as far as, you know, applicants come to us, they request a rezon. We feel like it, it fits the, the neighborhood, the situation, the traffic. And we've, and so we've supported several rezones very similar to this in the past. And we, I have, I do have a, a good source on, on spot rezoning that actually was written by our, the hearing examiner that we use, Phil Oldbrecht. So I, I can share that with you, Commissioner Netherland, and if, if you'd like. So, and we refer to that document all the time when we're looking at rezones. And so I feel pretty confident, I feel very confident that this is, would not be considered a, an illegals spot rezon.
And I, I will believe you, but I do know that I did ask for you to, to go and do legal. I'd appreciate the next time if we do that, when it's requested, but I believe you. So with that, that was my question. Does anybody else have questions from the commission after what I said? Hearing none, is there anybody in the public that has questions of staff regarding their presentation? I see no hands. Please unmute yourself now and say your name. Hearing none, I have no, I understand there's no questions, then we will move into public testimony, close that aspect. We are now in public testimony. Is anybody in the public who would like to testify on this rezon? If you would, please raise your hand. I see no hands. If you would like to testify on this rezon, please unmute yourself and say your name so I could call on you, please. Anybody like to testify? Please unmute yourself, say your name. I see none. I will close public testimony and I will move into Commissioner deliberations and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the rezon of parcel number 32030-14-90030 from neighborhood residential to mixed use.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded. The Board of County Commissioners approve the rezon of parcel number 32030-14-90030 from NR to MU. Okay. With that being said, is there any comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. This hearing is closed. Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Marissa.
Okay, next up is item number 11, which is our board and reports and calendars. Commissioner Trask, if you don't mind going first, and Commissioner Shutey second, I will follow up.
All right, thank you. So yesterday was a big day for Mason Transit. We were able to meet our new candidates for the, our new manager. Some very qualified candidates, so it'll be a difficult decision. So this afternoon, we do continue those interviews with the, the candidates that we have. I have a public works board check-in at 3:30, a WASAC meeting at 4:00. Tomorrow is our, the EOC meeting. I have a meeting with the sheriff's office. PAC Mountain, meeting with Proffman to discuss our, the Frank position. Mason Transit pre-agenda meeting, a meeting with Loretta and Cal. Thursday, a courthouse security meeting, a local emergency planning committee meeting, a POP meeting, a WASAC meeting regarding a bill that was brought to the, that will affect our, our public health. A DNR beneficiary meeting. I'm going to have lunch with our auditor on Friday. Come back Monday for briefings, WASAC meeting, Community Action Council meeting, Mason Transit Board meeting. Supported Housing Task Force meeting, a Republican Women's meeting. Community Action Council is having a retreat on Thursday and Friday. And then we're back here for Monday's briefing, WASAC, Community Action Council, and then our commission meeting on the 22nd.
I'll also be meeting with the sheriff's office after today's meeting. Have a meeting, I'll be attending the interviews for Mason Transit General Manager this morning and afternoon, and then have a MaceCom board meeting. Also have a Grapevine Center for Music board meeting. Have a meeting with the EDC coming up, as well as our work session with Proffman on the future of the Support Services position, director position. Have a US Forest Service Cushman Corridor meeting on Thursday and also be attending the, the House Bill 1152 implementation group with WASAC. Have the Mason County Coordinated Entry Advisory Board meeting. And then a meeting with Jeff Knighton from the City of Shelton. Also have the, I guess, bi-annual Skokomish Watershed Action Team meeting on Friday. Back for briefings on the 14th, as well as I'll be attending the Mason County Youth Virtual Town Hall. Have my check-in with the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the Monthly Mason Crisis Services System of Care Work Group. Hooknow Coordinating Council meeting, Thurston Mason BH ASO Board meeting, and then Shelton Rotary has their installation dinner on Thursday, the 17th. Excited to see my friend and former colleague of the legislature, Pam Schaefer, be installed as incoming president for Shelton Rotary. Very excited for Pam. Then back for our briefings on the 21st with our next CANBE jail study. My regular check-in with staff leadership at the BH ASO and my Army Corps check-in.
Thank you. This last few weeks, we've had our area command meetings, Board of Health, Course Coalition meetings, meeting with the individuals regarding signage, Memorial Day speech. I was very honored to be asked to be a keynote speaker at our Memorial Day service up at Moro Park here in Shelton. Please don't forget those who gave everything that they had so that we can do what we do. CANBE jail study, North Mason Athletics Community Committee that we have formed in order to maintain that those parks are kept open and publics because we've received money on behalf of the county. I think I'm attached to that one for the rest of my life because we did that, we agreed to that, to, to utilize that money. PRTPO, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization Executive Meeting. We had our, our Mason Transit meet and greet yesterday. Well, next week here, we'll be having area command meetings again. Mason Transit Authority, a special meeting here shortly. Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority will be having a regular meeting. And I'll also have another meeting later on their Finance Committee Support Services Director meeting regarding that with Proffman. Economic Development Council meeting, we'll have another meeting on the Belfer EIS with staff. The implementation of 1152 with Pierce on a Zoom. We lost our pastor, one of the pastors up in North Mason, Pastor Brian Peterson, incredible man. I don't know if any of you guys knew him. I will be attending his services if you're going to be there too. I also, Commissioner will be attending the Mason County Youth Town Hall meeting. So we will for sure be there together on that. Another Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization meeting, the CANBE jail study meeting, and it brings us back to start all over again. All right. We have come to the end of our agenda. And if there is no objection, I will adjourn. Do I hear any objection?
Objection.
Hearing none, we are adjourned. Have a great one, everybody.
Take care. Have a good week.
Thanks.